And Mrs. Mullenbeck, we are ready.
Thank you. Remember that someday. Ms. Smith, could we please have a roll call?
Mr. Downing.
Here.
Mr. Galacki.
Present.
Mrs. Hope. Ms. Mullenbeck. Here. Mr. O'Hara.
Here.
Mr. Schein.
Present.
Dr. Steinberg.
Here.
Six members present.
Wonderful. I think the first thing we need to start off is a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Just a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Wonderful. That means we're moving on now to item three on our agenda, which are the board and superintendent's reports. We will start with Dr. Gravel and the superintendent's report.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's my first report, which means I might have a few things to share. We're going to have a little celebration as we go through. First and foremost, for those who may not be here this evening, or for those who are and would like to do a little multitasking, I'd encourage you to visit www.glenbrook225.org. When you navigate there, or to any of our school websites, such as glenbrooknorth.org or glenbrooksouth.org, you will find a newly refreshed interface. I want to call out a few really cool things here. And actually, while I'm doing that, Christina, would you just mind switching to, kind of hitting escape, and I already have it queued up there? I'm going to our page. So first and foremost, you'll notice that our entire visual presence has been refreshed, and there's very large clickable icons and clickable menus. Part of the reason why you're seeing that is when we looked at the actual data, over seventy percent of our parents and students access the district or our school websites on their mobile device. And as a result, when you're navigating through all of these different areas, you don't want it built for someone who's sitting in front of a very large desktop screen computer. You want to be able, really quickly be able to navigate through and find what you're looking for. At the same time, we also realize that the majority of our website viewers are navigating to find three key things. They're looking for Power School, they're looking for calendars and bell schedules, and they're looking for the staff directory. But we would be remiss if we didn't call out our new community engagement platform, Parent Square. And so all of these tools are right there accessible for you. You also notice, as you scroll down through the page, we've gotten rid of a lot of excess information that our data showed no one ever looked at. And in its place, we've made very large-scale graphics and access so that members of our community can easily access our strategic plan, see some welcome messages from our principals and myself on the district side, but also, Christina, if you'd be so kind, jump to the newsletters. Even though we're switching a lot of our communication to Parent Square, we've also found it being very helpful so that community members see what it is that we're communicating out in those weekly principal messages or weekly updates. And so right from the main page of the website, you can access an archive on a week-by-week basis of those communications coming out. Again, just trying to simplify access to information. The bottom part right there, if you go into the third section of the website, it's newsletters. And you can also access those from the "Our District" or "Our School" section, and it's right under, oh, forgive me, I'm getting my words wrong, "Our Families" area, and then you have newsletters and also all of those bell schedules. I really want to take a moment and thank Carol Smith and Christina Salanikas, our two communications professionals in this school district, for championing this effort. We started the redesign process, as maybe crazy as this might be, only in April, and we're at a full redesign of our website. And for anyone who might be interested in seeing what the process is like to design a website, on the back counter of the boardroom, we have all of our storyboards. Here on our storyboards, you'll see that we looked at school districts around our area, their websites, we looked at school districts and state organizations across the nation, and we even went down to well-functioning retail mobile websites that our students are used to using. And you'll see Post-it notes and callouts and mixing and matching, and we're really excited to be sharing this with our families. Our next step that we'll be working through over the next few weeks is cleaning up some of those menus even more, collapsing or improving descriptions, and really working on our searchability so that when a family member, a student, a staff member clicks that search icon, not only, again, can they see all of those key popular things that folks look for, but when they type some information into "What can we help you find?", that they're getting that result that they're looking for. So just wanted to call those out, thank the communications team, and really encourage feedback to be sent to us so we can keep on improving these sites. So just really exciting changes there. As we go back to our slide deck, we have a few more things to talk about, and one of them certainly is our launch of Parent Square. And I just thought it would be cool to talk about some of the statistics with our first large-scale message going out on Monday, July 7th. So in that first message, we talked about the things that parents are most interested in in July, which is, what do I need to do for the first day of school? That includes reviewing your student feeds, and includes navigating to Power School, and purchasing memberships to our wonderful parent organizations, as well as items such as the yearbook and Activity Pass. And of the over eighty-nine-hundred parents that received that message, just wanted to point out that two-hundred-and-sixty-five of them already logged into Parent Square and said, you know what? I don't want to receive my information by email, I want it by text the minute it comes out. And so nearly three-hundred families have already signed up for that, and a little less than five-hundred-and-fifty families have downloaded the Parent Score app, and that means instead of text message, instead of email, they're getting those push notifications right to their phone, and they're able to go into Parent Square. And not only can they see the content that the district is sending, but they can appreciate it, the ever-popular liking, if you will, and they can also add comments directly to the sender there. So just emphasizing some real exciting advances that we have. And along those lines, just want to point out some reminders to our families, the student fee system is open. If you are seeking to have your student take the bus to school, we've already started to build our bus routes, and we build our bus routes based on everyone who purchased a bus pass by July 11th. There is still opportunities to purchase your bus pass, but we strongly encourage you to do it as soon as possible. And then finally, information about picking up your Chromebooks and also getting your instructional materials such as textbooks or novels that are still used in our classes, that information will be sent out next week, and pickup appointments will be scheduled between August 4th and August 8th. So no long lines, you'll choose an appointment time, and you should be in and out within five to ten minutes. Another exciting thing that's happening at this time of school year are capital projects. And I know that Mr. Schein had the ability to visit the Transition Services facility today over in Northbrook, and I have just two pictures because I didn't want to show too much, since we have a ribbon cutting coming up that we'll talk about in a moment. But this is our new eight-thousand-square-foot facility at 1200 Shermer Road. It's intended for our students that are continuing to receive transition skill support typically after their eighteenth birthday. This shows our new teaching and instructional kitchen. You'll see a lot of counter space, a traditional oven, and the beautiful setup that you would see in a home environment or in a commercial setting. And then this is just an example highlighting again how many windows are all over this space, natural light coming in. This is actually one of our workrooms for our staff, and you just see this natural light coming throughout. So a little bit of a plug for our community, as well as our board members. On Friday, August 8th, at nine o'clock a.m., we will be hosting our ribbon cutting, and we would love to have any community members who would like to tour the space and experience it, join us for that ribbon cutting, and then we'll be doing an open house for a few hours. And we're also going to be sending out invitations to every student who will be attending Transition Services next school year, as well as other students who might be in other placements now who might find this a wonderful home. And so put it on the calendar now, and we look forward to seeing you there. There might be cake. Putting it out there. Nine a.m. All right, we'll do a ribbon cutting downstairs, or a little presentation from nine to nine-fifteen, ribbon cutting upstairs on the third floor right at nine-fifteen, and then we'll go on with tours throughout the facility. Beyond Glenbrook Transition Services, this is a picture of the newly refloored, or resurfaced, I don't know what the best term is, fieldhouse over at Glenbrook South. This has been a project that's been under consideration for quite some time, and it is fully complete. And in addition to the new floor that has nicely visible lines for courts, we've also cleaned up some of the other lining that is throughout the fieldhouse, including the track. So very appreciative of this, and our students are already utilizing the space. Over at Glenbrook North, when you walk in the front door, you might experience a little bit of dust, and that's because we are in the process of putting some very cool finishing touches on a massive hallway renovation, which is by our dean's office and the attendance office. Just want to point out how much space is captured, and a total different experience when you remove what we call a spined ceiling from the top. The ceilings are nearly three feet taller than they were previously. In addition, this area is now sprinkled through a sprinkler system, and there is going to be student seating and collaborative workspace throughout. We look forward to showing some updated pictures, but this picture was actually taken just this morning. Also, in addition to that hallway, we are replacing a large amount of carpet throughout the first floor of Glenbrook North. So all around, the idea, the library, right here is right past the student center, you'll see a lot of carpet replacement all the way to the other end of the building. Interesting fun note from a capital project standpoint, we found that this was one portion of the building that actually had a lot of padding with the carpet, which was adhered to the floor in a very strategic manner to make sure it could not be removed in the future. So we had a little bit longer of a delay cleaning up the flooring area, but everything is looking great now. Over at Glenbrook North on the second floor, we are going through our continued bathroom replacement process, and so just want to point out, we've really become more efficient as we're modernizing bathrooms by building a lot of the plumbing off-site and then bringing it in and simply putting it in place and making connections, as opposed to putting all of the piping and all of the secure holds together on-site. And then, very, very special, very exciting project, we are making a lot of progress on the new sound system at the Glenbrook North CPA. So I know it doesn't look like a lot here, but there are tremendous amount of wires traversing and being pulled through piping, and also the starting of termination of those wires into the sound system. Over at Glenbrook South, and actually even today over at Glenbrook North, we're doing resurfacing, addressing the addition of new sidewalks in different areas to make our students walk to school or walk from parking lots even safer, so you'll see some of those. And that, I went to Dr. George's first slide, just want to make sure I covered everything. That is everything I have for projects going on so far. But before I move on that, Mr. Schein, I know you had an opportunity to tour Transition Services, is there anything you wanted to share from your experience?
No, thank you for highlighting that. The space is absolutely outstanding. It is so light and so bright and so inviting. It's just marvelous, and I hope that everybody, my fellow board members have an opportunity, especially if you'd seen the space we had currently or prior above Little Louis in Northbrook. I mean, it's just night, and it's like going from like a log cabin to a skyscraper or something. I mean, it's just unbelievably modern, and I can only imagine, I've not spoken to them directly, but how some of the families must feel about this change for their kids. So it's an awesome job, you guys.
Thank you for sharing. And a little plug, to learn more about Transition Services Facility, the third edition of Glenbrook Insights, our district podcast, will be coming out in the near future, and we talk a little bit about the exciting changes happening there. So just another way, check us out on your preferred podcast platform. With like and subscribe, guys, correct. With that said, I'll transition over to Dr. Georges, who had a really cool experience.
I sure did, Dr. Gravel.
Three weeks ago now.
Yeah, I sure did. So I had the extraordinary privilege of being able to participate in the Habitat for Humanity trip this summer. It is such a perfect example of our District 225 vision to inspire each learner to apply their abilities, knowledge, and skills to promote collaboration, adaptability, and a broader understanding of success to positively impact our community and the world. And witnessing that, it was such an idealized model of what makes this district extraordinary that I felt compelled to share the highlights of this trip with you today. This year marks the twentieth anniversary of this program. And over the course of a week, students enrolled in the summer school course traveled to Manisteeque, Michigan to build, remodel, and maintain homes in that community through our longtime partnership with Habitat for Humanity. The impact on the Manisteeque community and countless District 225 students is tremendous. This photograph you see here of this June's group, if you walk into the Habitat facility, there is a room that houses all of the photographs of more than, excuse me, of two decades of Spartans and Titans who have served others and made a difference in the lives of countless families. When we go to that community, the Glenbrooks are known because we have had such a positive impact on the lives of that community. During this week of summer school, our students learn a variety of construction skills, they learn the power of service and developing a philanthropic spirit, but it's really only one aspect of the course. They also engage in curriculum about the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens by Stephen Covey. They learn important life skills such as budgeting for meals, cooking, cleaning, and teamwork, and they are provided opportunities to experience the ecological preservation and uniqueness of the Lake Superior and Hiawatha National Forest. This interdisciplinary service learning opportunity is aligned with Focus Area 1 of our strategic plan to innovate and implement creative strategies to help students explore their passions, and it is absolutely a living example of learning reimagined in Focus Area 3. This summer, we had forty-four students participating in the program, half traveled in June, and that was the group I was able to travel with. The other half are in Michigan as we speak right now. Under the leadership of GBS teacher Mike Cindy, the program continues to thrive. I would really like to take a moment to thank the following staff for volunteering their time to make this program possible. There's a photograph of the June team, July team is literally there right now. But as you can see, that's GBS teacher Mike Cindy, he's the leader of the June team, Sam Booty, who's a GBS teacher, Bianca Banish, who works at both GBS and GBN, and Iris Estrada, who is employed over at GBN. Those three were the chaperones, they were an absolutely extraordinary team, taking good kids, good care of our students and being excellent role models. Right now, our lead is Alex Kosis, we have Brianna Wolfsky, Kenny Brown, and Richard Jame Davis, they are all from Glenbrook South, and they are up there with our students right now. In closing, I believe the impact of this trip is best heard through a student's voice, and therefore I'd like to share the reflection of a GBS-rising senior, Xavier Custodio. He says, "Spending a week helping a family I had never met before through Habitat for Humanity was one of the most eye-opening and meaningful experiences of my life. Going into it, I expected to do physical work like painting, lifting, and cleaning. What I didn't expect was how much emotional and personal growth I would walk away with by the end of the week. This experience challenged my perspective, it strengthened my character, and it gave me a deeper appreciation for service, teamwork, and the power of empathy." So thank you, Xavier, for summarizing the power of this program and defining what makes learning at Glenbrook South and Glenbrook North in District 225 so unique and extraordinary. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Georges. The second part of our superintendent's report begins talking about Glenbrook Summer School. And before I transition it over to two amazing leaders that we have over at Glenbrook South, I just want to talk about them for a little bit of time. So while I say that, Ms. Chinchola and Dr. Kim, if you'd like to come up to the podium. Ariselli Chinchola is our Associate Principal of Student Support over at Glenbrook South, and Dr. Joyce Kim is our Associate Principal of Teaching and Learning at Glenbrook South. And as the board might recall, a few years ago, we transitioned to having our two Associate Principals oversee all of the ins and outs of summer school. A lot of times, we think of summer school as a bit of a smaller program, but the truth, as Joyce and Ariselli will point out, is that we have over twelve-hundred students participating in summer school across two semesters and across two very unique programs, our traditional summer school program where students are taking courses, and then also our extended school year program where students are working to support their goals as they're continuing their education from the end of the school year. Running summer school begins well before the first day in June. In fact, a lot of planning begins right before the winter break and kicks off in earnest right after the end of the first semester, as we're starting to identify teachers who are able to devote time during their summers to supporting our students as they expand their horizons, catch up, or make up some different courses. I am truly appreciative of Joyce and Ariselli taking this task on because this is the first year that we're in this new model, and that candidly meant there weren't a lot of instructions written down, there might be some past practices that weren't written down, and a lot of learning to be done. And they opened their minds, they took each situation that was presented to themselves with a lot of grace and appreciation and understanding, and they have possibly run the smoothest summer school that at least I have seen in this school district in the last ten years. And most importantly, I believe that they're building and documenting a wonderful foundation so that we can keep this going as summer school transitions to Glenbrook North next year to support their colleagues. So with that said, Dr. Kim, I know you're going to get us started. Thank you, and we look forward to learning more about summer school.
This is fancy. Thank you, Dr. Gravel. This is not something that Ariselli and I did ourselves. We had an incredible team with us and who supported us, and we asked a lot of questions, and people were just so willing to help and be our teammates side by side. So like Dr. Gravel said, this was the first time where the AP of Teaching and Learning and the AP of Student Supports really had full oversight from start to finish, and like Dr. Gravel said, the start was really early. I looked back today at my calendar and our very first meeting, I don't know if you remember, Ariselli, but it was September 16th, so it was right after school began, but it was needed because we needed to plan long-term for this program. So before I talk about some of the updates, I would be remiss if I did not share some things to the specific people on this slide. I know that we all can read, but out of great appreciation, I would like to say their names. So you can see the slide, but Sofia Alvarez, Ron Bean, Sean Garrison, Dan Gorski, Susan Lovell, Katie McEwen, Linda Regal, Laura Riche, Terry Ryan, Doug Schiller, Josh Stanton, Zaira Uwi, Stacy Wolf, and the Quest staff, and a shout-out to Alam Hizan Hijazi, who is our Quest staff manager. But these people really helped journey with us from start to finish. We're not done yet, we end next Thursday, so it's all going to be fine, but they helped move us from a planning stage to an implementation stage. And in the next slide, because I have the clicker, ooh, okay. Thank you also to the summer school staff. You will see the numbers broken down by Semester 1 and Semester 2. Semester 1 had a few more classes available than Semester 2, but we had a robust teaching staff here. I want to thank not only our teachers and counselors and certified staff, but all of our staff members who helped greet our students, smiled every morning, welcomed them in. This is the very first time where many of our incoming freshmen are having a high school experience. If you see day one, they are terrified, and their parents and their guardians are terrified in the car, and we have to wave because they're letting their kid go to high school, and it's a ginormous high school, and so they were scared and lost in the halls, and we had everyone get up and help, even if they were not summer school staff members. This was a collective huge lift. And maybe their first day, they were nervous, but I assure you, they will probably tell their families and their community members and friends that we have the best, warm, positive, friendly team here in the Glenbrooks, and I'm so proud to be a teammate alongside them. The next slide shows the student enrollment data, and you will see that most of the students do come from south, but we do have a large group of students coming from north as well. We do have a few students who also join us from out of district. First session, we had thirty-eight course sections offered. Second session, we had twenty-five course sections offered, and you will see the number of students who enrolled first session was seven-hundred-and-thirty-four, and second session was five-hundred-and-nine. I'm very happy to share that we had a ninety-five percent attendance rate, we're pretty strict on that attendance policy, and like I shared, because we're not through with summer school the second session yet, we don't have the numbers yet for the attendance data. This is pretty comparable to last year, I did check, we had twenty-one fewer students first semester, and then seven fewer students second semester compared to last year.
It's my pleasure to talk about our extended school year. If you are aware of our extended school year, it's for students who have IEPs, our case managers, and IEP team basically decide, along with the student and the family, that a student may need extended school year services so that there's no regression academically, socially, behaviorally as well. So we had seven programs, classrooms and programs that served ninety-two students, all but one were taught and developed by our teachers. Our staff, you know, developed the curriculum, they collaborated with our teams to ensure that the needs of all of our students are met. The one person we forgot to mention, because it's extremely important, he is like my right person, my hand person, is Joe Malloy. He's one of our instructional assistants, and because part of ESY is that we provide transportation for our students, and he and I are on the radio all the time making sure that our transportation is available, Nas also, who was at the district now, Julianne, we're in constant emailing back and forth with first student, making sure that our student's ride is here, making sure that they're on time. So I have to give a shout-out to Joe, who taught me a lot and just helped me navigate this process. Thank you. In terms of ESY, one of our, three of our seven programs, we have math strategies, read and write strategies, as well as work-study. For math, the students are identified as needing, again, additionally to support their math instruction and skills, so we had nineteen students in that class. Then read and write is focusing on reading and writing comprehension skills, twenty students. We had our work-study program, they focus on career exploration and job readiness skills. I had the opportunity to observe that classroom, and the students were learning on how to, they were going to go visit the Ace Hardware Store as a field trip, and they were learning of what things that they could find at a hardware store. So it was a really great opportunity to just watch them engage with their teachers. So it was a really great opportunity to just watch them engage with their teachers. Now typically for ESY, there could be more than the 92 students identified, but it is an opportunity for parents to say, "We're not interested in this, in ESY this summer." So I did want to point that out, that not every student that is ESY eligible participates in summer school. Thank you, whoever's clicking for me, thank you so much. And our next program is job coaching, and I do have to send a special thank you to Stacy Wolf, our Assistant Director of Special Education. She oversees our transition program that Dr. Gravell mentioned, and Rob Fleming, he and she coordinate and partner with our community partners, as you see. Our students participate in community-based vocational training and experiences. So these are our 18 community partners for this summer. Each, some of the students may require a one-to-one that goes with them onto the job site to support them and their learning vocational skills. And these are students that are above the 18, 18-plus in our transition program specifically. Some of the students that you saw in the work-study, those five students could potentially go into the job coaching program next summer. Thank you. For the first time in the history of the Glenbrooks, I believe, we partnered and had our GBOC program in summer school in the actual building. So they spent one week at GBOC, and then they transitioned into the building. I think a lot of people, I also had concerns, but we worked with Doug Schiller, who is the Assistant Director. We worked really closely to make sure that all the needs of his students were being met, especially because they do have some unique needs. And so far, it's been going great, and we check in with him at least once or twice a week just to see how things are going. Yeah, see, 16 and 15 students. The last one is our TLS program, and this is in partnership with True North this summer. All of our TLS students continue to build on their reading and writing and math goals, ensuring consistency during the summer months. In addition to their academic work, students are actively practicing essential life skills and social-emotional skills that support the greater independence and confidence. Through True North and their staff, and the staff, some of our staff are also working there, they provide hands-on experiences each week, also with vocational skill-building activities to daily fitness classes and meal prep. And their approach again is making sure that the students are receiving a well-rounded experience with all facets of their, of continuing and developing their life skills.
So I do have a couple celebrations to share. We offered both Get Ahead and Credit Recovery classes, so students who may want, have wanted a lighter load for balance in their schedules for the fall, might have taken a class for Get Ahead and Credit Recovery, those who did not earn a passing grade, oftentimes for courses that are graduation requirements. So those two different categories there, we had a 99% pass rate first semester and no behavior incidences. I was trying to check, put an emoji, but this doesn't let me, this template. You all need to work on that emoji part. And we also did proactively invite incoming students, incoming freshmen, who we knew needed more math support to take pre-algebra in the summer to boost their algebraic skills so that in the fall, they would really hit the ground running. Research is very, very clear on algebra. Having the strong algebraic skills are a strong predictor of students' overall academic readiness and future success. And so we were able to offer that course, I think for the first time. I think that's a pattern too. So some requested classes could not run, but we were able to offer a class called Personalized Exploration for some of those students impacted so they could take the course online. Continued celebrations here. There was also a study skills class, which really focused on executive functioning. During first semester, it was highly successful, and we even got a community member shout-out. You can see, it says, "225 study skills class offered in the summer is a gem. It's all executive functioning skills and has been very helpful for my kid." Exclamation point. It's only three weeks, so if you have a high schooler, you may want to explore next year. So that was a shout out that we received from a community member. There were, that's the breakdown of the students. We had mostly incoming freshmen, but we also did have a few sophomores and even a senior. And I just think, just the fact that a child or student went home and said something positive about summer school is, and talked about it with their families, there's just so many wins right there. So I was happy to see that.
You can stay up here. Go back and forth. Along with celebrations, there's always some challenges. And one of the challenges, like many school districts I think face, is finding teachers to teach summer schools for us specifically in the math and science. I think because we also had a shorter summer this year, we simply had to unfortunately cancel some math classes and science classes because we didn't have math teachers or science teachers available to teach. So, and that's one of our challenges, so it's something for us to consider and look into that as we progress. We also had an issue with driver's ed. The state of Illinois, Illinois State Police had a backlog, and we're trying to get instructors also, because we had such a high demand with students wanting to take driver's ed. We were very fortunate to have a group of students and parents that were very flexible when it happened to us, because we did not want to cancel the behind-the-wheel portion for them. So we worked with Josh Stanton, who's our I instructional supervisor. He did amazing work in trying to coordinate and plan behind the wheel. Each of behind-the-wheel student has to get six hours with an instructor. And he did an amazing job of working together, coordinating and rescheduling the students that were impacted because of the delay. So that was a challenge that we faced. And another challenge that I know we faced every summer school is attendance. I think we, I want to, I'll talk a little bit about this, but a suggestion would be that in the future, we really communicate early in the fall when families are thinking about summer plans and maybe buying tickets, that we really emphasize that when summer school is, I did see it on the one-page calendar, which is great, because some families are like, "Oh, we didn't realize, and you know, we already have this family trip. Can they miss three days?" We're like, "Sorry, we can't," because you're talking about a semester class that's condensed in 12 days. So that was a challenge that we definitely faced. Considerations? One of the things that Joyce and I have talked about, I asked Linda Regal, who also saved us. Linda is honestly, truly the person who runs summer school, let's be honest. She runs summer school. So when we met in September, we're like, "Linda, what do we need to know?" And she has been amazing. We would like to collect feedback from our families and students about how easy was it to register? What, you know, what are your needs? What are your thoughts? We also want to talk to our teachers. Was the hiring process easy? Was it too cumbersome? What can we do better? So the first step that we would like to do is do a survey. We'd also like to, in collaboration with our GBN counterparts and our district leaders that are here, we'd like to look at an audit to see how many, what are the types of the classes and courses that students are taking? Based off of the student survey, we could ask, are they really just trying to get ahead? Are they making up credits? What's the purpose of summer school? We also wanted to explore targeted interventions a little bit more. Like Joyce talked about, the pre-algebra, we worked with both of our instructional supervisors in math. We identified kids in December that the middle schools identified saying, "Hey, they need additional support." We invited all of the families, there's about 40 kids that we identified. Not all 40 students could participate, but we would like to explore more classes like that that could potentially be an intervention similar to the study skills. I'm like, "We need to advertise that class more," because executive functioning, as those of you who are nodding your head know, that is something that our families have asked for in my area, which is student support. And again, communication, I think, is just something that we need to improve on. Thank you so much, Dr. Gravell. Do we take questions, or we just presented?
Well, let's say this. When I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Kim and Ms. Conchola and said, "Can you provide a little information and background on summer school?", I would say they took it to one level and then really wanted to make sure that they highlighted the amazing work of their colleagues and not just take all the credit, most certainly, but also identified where there's areas for growth. So before we do any questions, can we just give a round of applause to these two wonderful folks? And then if there are questions, we certainly can take them now, or we can follow up later.
Sure. And you may, guys, may or may not know, but the difference between GBN and GBS, is there a reason why more students are coming from GBS, we're maybe not meeting a need at GBN? Or do you guys not know?
I wondered the same thing, actually. And so that's why I looked at last year's data, and it was very, very similar in terms of percentages. So I'm not, we do have more, more students at GBS. And maybe, because I was thinking, it's housed this year at GBS, so maybe more students are willing to take it.
But last year, it wasn't.
Correct. And so that's why I had the same question, and I didn't have.
For those of us who have been here.
Yeah, I think part of that is, if we look at their two recommendations at the top, that's going to really help answer that question. What is the intent of summer school? And helping our families and our students know, is it credit advancement? Is it credit recovery? Is it enrichment? Those are areas, I think, your recommendation, your second bullet there is a tremendous recommendation for actually getting at what do our students need?
Okay. Yeah, what are the families looking for?
Correct.
And then on the one where you mentioned the eighth graders, the 40 families, was that across all of our feeder districts?
Yes, both schools identified, so both instructional supervisors in math met with their counterparts in the middle schools. And then we identified students based on test scores and teacher feedback.
Perfect. That's awesome, yes, getting them in. You're right, they're so little when they come in as eighth graders. So it's a little terrifying.
They're actually like this. For us, they're like, they're like this.
Mr. Glawacki?
So for those students that are trying to get ahead, once, the parents are very appreciative of the summer school program here, whether they're athletes or in the fine arts, generally where I've been hearing from families that have been taking classes to get ahead. Question, this may be for Ryan, actually, in light of the APA challenge, the changes that are coming and everything, a lot of questions were, how many of these can, in the future, be counted towards honors? Or will there be more honors options? Because they're carving that out, and sometimes they were on that honors track, but only what's available during summer to free up a schedule so they can participate in the drama program or participate in varsity sports? They're having to choose.
Yeah, at this point, we stayed true to our past practices with summer school in that regards, but I think, not to consistently reference this, but I do think we need to look at that, and we need to look at, how do we bridge? Because now we have clear data from our students, who needs what supports. So not only that advancement for those students that need it, but we also know who could use what we would call a bridge into high school to set them up for equal success. So APA is helping us from that. Yeah, exactly, pushing us into some data-informed decisions that in the past we haven't had.
Because there seems to be interest in terms of people wanting to even take more classes if they were, weren't hurting their GPA.
Yes.
Because some, they're getting knocked down and stuff. The other one was, people also, from the families, I've got a child going through this, she's not happy, but she'll be happier in the fall when her schedule's lighter.
We're in the same situation.
But they were very appreciative of the July 4th break with everything moving up this year and the schedule being changed and stuff. Very appreciative to just have a clear week instead of like, "Oh, I get in for a day, I get to go do something with the family, but now I could actually unplug and new semester." A lot of them got their full week of vacationing in that week. They did a lot, so. Thank you.
Dr. Steinberg?
Three, hopefully, quick comments. First, congrats to everybody. 99% passing rate is great, in any circumstance. And if you add that, some people miss some classes, that's even better. So, like, congratulations to everybody. I agree with, I think was your comment, summer schedule is a commitment, and it's only a short commitment. So, and we have two sessions of summer, so it shouldn't be a hard choice for the family and the student. If they cannot commit to the three weeks, or at least missing one day or two days, they should pick the other one. It's like, I don't know if respect is the right word, but we are all in the same boat, and families are making choices, and everything is a set of choices. I'm taking, if I'm taking summer school for enrichment, I'm taking summer school for advancing and getting more time, then at some point, we have to give time somewhere else. So, I don't know if our support will do something for that or not, but I think we have to have clear rules for that. The only caveat that we have, looking at the future, as we have more data, on the people that have taken, that have to take classes to recover for bad grades, that may be, to me, and again, looking down the road, there's a difference on not getting a good grade. There's a huge difference between what class and what grade you didn't get a good grade. Maybe you did 80% okay, but not enough to pass the class. And it's like, who knows? One day, we get to more individualized curriculum, you can accommodate. But right now, we are not there. So if you're committed to have to come, you have to come. And it's a good thing, if you understand the material, help the other people that are sitting with you, because it's a short course, so you can, you can help. My last comment, I don't know, I feel the pain on, we don't have enough teachers to teach, and I, teachers need to certificate, I assume, to teach in the summer?
Yes.
I wonder if we can, if we can work close to home, but with universities, they have different programs to try to get people that maybe, they normally get their job, their career services offices, and so many teachers that are changing jobs within ER 1 and ER 2, or they want to beef up their curriculum, could be available for the summer, but they don't know how to reach out. And, back to human resources, that expanded reach of staff that want to teach, because to my colleague's point, if students want to take classes, and we have the students here, and we can make the effort to have the teachers, at least we, I know you, we are making the efforts, I don't take this away, but maybe there's a way to increase the pool.
For sure. I think we need to be strategic about it. I think we learned a lot this year about the timing and when we're reaching out. I think both of us through our networks, we were like, "We need teachers, we need teachers." So it's just timing, it was also, so I think we should just can improve on that, to increase that. And, you know, our teachers work so hard throughout the year, so some teachers are like, "I just need a break."
Yes, I did have some teachers say to me, "This summer, I just can't. It's a shortened summer. I just really want to spend time with family." And I did hear from families too, who have said, you know, "I had my older child take summer school, it was great, but I just, you know, after COVID, I feel, I feel that what I'm hearing is that a lot of families, they just want to keep that summer sacred with, for mental health reasons and just to have family time." And so, for various reasons, I think we see numbers shifting. Any other questions?
I might have more of a comment. Congratulations, the excitement and the energy, you guys. If it was just half, it'd be so palpable, if you just put half of that into summer school, I'm sure it was terrific. And I cannot wait to, and I, you know, I don't know if you guys are going to do a survey or not, but I certainly would be excited to hear, because that sounds like you probably got a lot of positive response.
Thank you so much, Joyce and RSLI and Ms. Mullenbeck. That concludes our report.
Wonderful, thank you.
That takes us then to item four on our agenda, which is recognition of community visitors, but I am not sure if we had anyone sign up to speak tonight. That's okay, you can always call us, send us an email, and then, you know, we'll have a meeting again in a couple weeks. So we're always happy, very happy to hear from members of the community, so please use any and all of those outlets in order to reach us. Item five on our agenda is our consent agenda. Dr. Gravell, are there any changes?
There are no changes.
Okay, in that case, just, I think one thing I did want to call out is that on the policies, we did make the change that Mr. Glawacki had suggested in the last meeting. Okay, terrific, wonderful. In that case, could I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Glawacki?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Shine?
Yes.
Dr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Ms. Mullenbeck?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Next item on our agenda, we have our discussion agenda, and the first item for that is our 25-26 fiscal year tentative budget.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mullenbeck. As we get started with the fiscal year budget, I want to take an opportunity and acknowledge a topic that has been talked about in the media and also by the Illinois State Board of Education, and that has to do with our federal funding. And so there's a lot of information coming out, different news articles, and certainly things you hear on the news. And I wanted to take this moment to provide some clarity as to, first of all, the percentage, if you will, of the school district's budget that is supported by the federal government, as well as
as well as kind of piecing together or connecting what we've heard and how it directly impacts the school district. So first and foremost, if we look at last fiscal year, federal funding accounted for about 3% of the fiscal year's budget. And that 3% translates to approximately $4.8 million. I've identified here on the slide, and I'll just mention them verbally here, that the overwhelming majority of the school district's federal funding comes to support our students with disabilities through revenue streams known as IDEA. And then we also receive other funding tied to community-based experiences, known as the STEP grant, and also Medicaid reimbursement. And that's when individuals who are on the Medicaid program receive nursing services, speech-language pathology, counseling, social work, we have the ability to reimburse a portion of that. And so you'll notice in general, that's where the majority of our funding from the federal government, where it's directly targeted to. And a lot of that funding is reimbursement as opposed to just a general funding stream. Well, if we fast forward, on July 1st, the state superintendent of education, which is Dr. Tony Sanders, he sent an email in what we know as the ISBE weekly update. And in that email, he shared that ISBE received a letter from the United States Department of Education that states, and I want to emphasize, that certain program funding allocations have not yet been finalized. So again, this, I want to take an opportunity and pause and say, even though we might hear different things, the specific termination or terminology on the letter is that it hasn't yet been finalized. But that's not all federal funding. Again, going back to that slide, the majority of our federal funding is targeted for students with disabilities. And those programs are not the programs that were identified as not yet being finalized, or frozen, or on hold. The programs all have very technical terms, Title I Part C, Title II Part A, and so on and so forth. And I tried to correlate those with kind of what they really get at. And you'll notice that Glenn Burke only receives $138,000 in those programs that have been identified as being on hold. I certainly want to acknowledge that the largest amount, $77,000, is for Title II Part A, teacher quality. We utilize that funding to support teacher professional development. So that is bringing individuals in-house, providing teachers release time to do work, providing mentoring support, or sending teachers out. And so that certainly is, is an amount that is directly tied to our teacher development. The other amounts are tied to supporting overall student supports, especially for our students that are English learners, or we refer to in Illinois as multilingual learners. And while $138,000 is most certainly a large amount of money, we are able to continue maintaining our programmatic standards that we've set throughout this fiscal year, even if that funding is not available. And to that end, we talk a lot about this with the finance committee, but not as often as a committee of the whole, if you will, with the full board. So throughout my tenure at the school district, in the last 10 years, we've experienced a lot of what ifs or it could happen. Certainly, we experienced a pandemic that impacted the revenue stream to the school district. But we've also heard of large-scale shifts. Sometimes we refer to it as the pension cost shift, or a property tax freeze, and in an organization that's nearly 94% locally funded, that would be significant. One of the areas we're very prideful of is we have built a financial kind of foundation that provides us the ability to not make quick reaction decisions as a result of, of an announcement that gets made. And what we mean by that is, in the event that a funding stream is impacted, it is fully canceled, we get notified it will not be continuing, we will continue programs as budgeted, as staffed, as planned for, until the end of the fiscal year. As soon as we get definitive answers, though, we will bring a group of stakeholders together, and we will process through what that means for us. We'll do those logical things, which is identifying any, for lack of better terms, low-hanging fruit that we can address. We'll try to find other efficiencies. We'll look to see if there's a combination of efforts that can, that can free up other resources to support the programs, as opposed to impacting programs. But nothing will happen outside of a process that we go through that is thoughtful, that is intentional, and that is transparent to all of our stakeholders. That includes our community members, our students who are impacted, our parents, and our staff members. So I just wanted to get started with that federal funding update. And then, as we look for the remainder of the fiscal year budget, we just had our finance committee, and I wanted to take an opportunity and defer to our committee members to share what we discussed. And I believe, Dr. Steinberg, you had mentioned that, that you were going to add some thoughts.
Thank you. So, does everybody get a copy of this, or not? Or it's in the? All right, it's in the agenda, right. So, Vicky did a great presentation for the committee, going mostly on a summary of the previous year's budget, and comparing our budgeted amounts to the actuals. And we went through categories, I'm going to go briefly through some of them. And then we went through the summary of the budget built for this upcoming fiscal year that actually started two weeks ago. As a reminder, the way we do budget at the district is zero-budget model. So every year, we start, not from scratch, but we build a budget from, from direct need. And a couple of key points, I believe, Vicky mentioned, and I think fell. Yes, I assume by this point, even if they close their eyes and hear me talking, know who I am. Anyway, so a couple of points, I'm on page 34, if I'm correct. You can't stand seeing mine. Thank you. This is a question point. If we look at page 34, in overall, if you see the allocation, what is actual, which is the second column, we had less revenues coming from the state, although we don't know, correct me, Vicky, if I'm wrong, we don't know if this is the final number, there may still be more property taxes coming, but this is just of the numbers that we have access now. So you basically got a little bit, almost 3% less than what we were expecting to get in that category. There were other categories that we got less. If you look at the numbers overall, our direct receipts were 3.8% down compared to what we were expecting. Now, to balance that, our expenses were also pared down a little bit. And if you look at the total direct disbursements, we spent 97.7 of what we were expecting to spend. So we spent about 2.3% less. And when we add uses of other funds, our total expenditures were 1.7 less than, than we were supposed to. Overall, for the year, we're expected, on an amended budget, to have a change of overall fund balance of 4.5 million, 4.6 million, almost. And we ended up having an actual of 7.1, almost 7.2 million dollars. We budget, we budget, in, in, what is the formulation you mentioned? We want to have, when we create the budget, we have the same amount for expenditures that we preview for revenues.
We look for a balanced budget, yep, with the exception of purposeful uses of fund balance, which is when the board intentionally is seeking to spend reserves that have been accumulated for targeted projects that support students.
And in those cases, like you said, the board approves it. So what we see at the bottom of page 34, which is some negative amount on the change of the overall fund balance, this was pre-approved, we agreed that we were going to be spending some money that we were going to be taking from, from the original budget. I'll make a pause here before going to the next one, in case people have questions that, or one of my colleagues wants to add something on last year's budget. And if you have questions, Vicky is standing there.
I just want to point out that this is very early numbers. We're very early in the audit window for the close of the fiscal year. So these numbers are likely to change by the final budget. We will get closer to those budgeted numbers than the actual, as it's displayed in this chart.
And I just wanted to point out for everyone else, we're also releasing this two weeks earlier than we have in the past. So we have more time to review. This is no action tonight. This is for review purposes, so you can also get your questions to Vicky and the staff over the next couple of weeks.
And one more thing that I think RJ says all the time, that it's that there's still some funding that we get through grants or other funding that sometimes comes after the year it's over, and there's some exercise on rebalancing or moving those funds. If there are no questions, Madam President. I think we'll go to page 42, if I'm not wrong.
Forty-two and forty-three, if you're looking at the electronic PDF, it'll be page 56 and 57.
Thank you. So when looking at this year's budget, in, what you can see, again, this is compared to the actuals, to the numbers that we have up to now from last year's budget, from the year that just finished. And our current budget, we expect 2.2 increase on total direct receipts, receipts, and total revenue up 1%. Because we do a balanced budget, if you look at the bottom table, on the table of expenditure summary, you'll see that expenditures, originally, if you look at total expenditures, is higher than total revenues. But to the point that RJ made earlier, we had approved the use of some funds for capital projects, and that's what you see on the bottom two lines, column two of the expenditure summary table, to have a balanced budget of 231,186,10. Our expenses also increased compared to last year. I don't know if you want to comment in terms of, we have more capital projects, but.
Yeah, I would just offer, one of the largest expenditure increases that we saw on a line item, not overall budget, but line item, is that we increased the amount of salaries for non-licensed staff members. And that is directly attributed to bringing the final phase of staff who used to work for True North as district employees. So instead of paying a contracted service, now they're district employees, and so you see that transition. And then we have some final, large capital projects that are coming to fruition. One is our guaranteed energy savings contract that we've talked about in the past. We kind of called that the battery project. We also are paying our last installment on the building automation system project that has been going on for a little more than three years now. And we also are replacing our fleet of maintenance vehicles to assist with snow removal, lawn maintenance, and things of that nature.
I defer to my colleagues, more comments from this table, or for this table? Questions for Vicky, or RJ?
Just another note that these numbers, again, are very tentative, just as the name of the budget sounds. This is based on information that is known at this time. There's a lot more information that'll be coming over the next six weeks before the final budget is presented. So there will be some changes.
And if anybody really wants to dig deeper, you can watch the finance meeting that happened before this. And it's, it's available, right? You can watch it online?
Available online for public inspection.
Okay. So there's no action then, tonight?
No action tonight.
We just need your approval to make the budget available, and then schedule a public hearing for August 25th.
Okay, do we need a motion for that, or do we just?
Consent is fine.
Any objections? I think we have consensus. Excellent. All right, thank you so much to all the members of the finance committee and Ms. Tarber. That takes us now to item 6.2, which is the appeal, the determination of the district's petition to withdraw from True North. And for that, we have Dr. Johns.
Thank you very much. This is a quick item, because it's largely a, it was largely forecasted in our last meeting as a continuation of the process to withdraw from True North that we started several months ago. One thing I want to make as a caveat before I dive into it, we do know that there are ongoing efforts within the True North Leadership Council, the 18 districts that function as a board in determining and setting the direction of that organization, to either move forward with the dissolution, to find a way to maybe create different forms of cooperatives or consortiums, or finding ways to change the structure of the organization that might be so appealing that our district and other districts that are in the same position as us might reconsider whether or not we actually leave. In particular, changing the fiscal structure, the financial structure of the organization, and making critical leadership changes. With all that in mind, the administration and our legal counsel recommend that we proceed with the withdrawal process, but at the same time, monitor these developments carefully to see if what happens is, if something is in the best interest of the district. So a little background on where we stand in terms of the petitions. To bring you back a couple of weeks ago, we had submitted petitions to withdraw to the other 17 districts. I believe we knew at that time that we had a couple who did or were going to vote against our petition. And truly, in fact, there were four districts that voted against our petition. So that requires us now to submit an appeal to North Cook. The North Cook appeal requires that the superintendent of the Intermediate Service Center convenes a three-member panel of people with education expertise, but who are not members of our district. The panelists must be impartial and non-local, and they determine if our district can independently serve our students. And part of what that requires is, and this is, it's an enormous document, is our comprehensive plan. We're wrapping up, we're probably a week to two weeks away from finalizing our comprehensive plan that we will submit to the Intermediate Service Center. At the same time, the ISBE is going to work with us, taking a look at our plan. Because even if the ISC approves our plan, we still need the ISBE to approve our plan. So we want kind of early feedback before we get to that stage. And so if approved, we're still on track for withdrawal effective July 1 of next year. So what I need today is to, permission from the board, a direction from the board, to make the next step, which is for the board to approve the appeal of the petition for us to move forward with the withdrawal from, and that's the appeal to North Cook ISC. So that's the motion I'm requesting tonight. Any questions?
I do have a question, but I'll hear it first. And I'm not sure if you, we may not have the answer today, but in my view, there are two options at the table. One option is to follow the recommendation and hope it goes okay, and we can withdraw on July 1. Option number two is to join everybody else, and worst-case scenario, we withdraw on July 1 of the following year. And that has an additional cost for us. What is not clear, at least to me, maybe we went over this, the meeting I wasn't here, is what is the cost that we would incur on this decision compared to the cost that we'd incur the other one? Because there's, there's a fiscal component to this.
Well, there's, it's a good question, and there's both fiscal and non-fiscal components of my answer. So there is some debate amongst the other member districts on whether or not our approach is legitimate. We are saying, we are following what the state law says. Our position is that the Articles of Agreement exceed the capacity that they have, therefore essentially unlawful, and we're going to follow the state code. And we think we've got a legally strong position there. If we were to wait, and ideally, Representative Katz-Malls' bill is signed by the governor, then we could just hop onto that, which would have the timeline of us withdrawing a year later. And it's a kind of a greased pathway then, right? Everything's in place. So in terms of our workload, many, much of it will be the same. Maybe the psychological stress of, and potential legal work lying ahead with our current plan would not be there. So there's, that I don't have a dollar figure for. But we're anticipating that our member fees for next year will be someplace between $650,000 and $750,000.
For the following?
For that year.
Not for this year, for the, for the year.
Yes, for that, for that, if we kick out our withdrawal a year, between 650,000 and 750,000. Yeah, yeah, I would anticipate it being a little higher, just. I would anticipate it being a little higher, just as costs creep.
From a financial perspective, too, when any district withdraws... So in theory, if the organization dissolves, there will still be outstanding pension liability payments that must be satisfied. So we already know by submitting our intent to withdrawal that we're going to have to make payments for their IRF pensions and other liabilities that exist. Now, those liabilities can decrease in cost if assets are sold, or there's available fund balance, or things of that nature. But I just wanted to bring that up because if we were to remain in for one more year, which might be an option that we want to further evaluate, we would have that year's payment as well as the pension liability costs that were somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.2, $1.5 million, if not more. One-time cost. So if you don't have to pay the 700, but you do have to pay the 1.2, 1.5, it would be beneficial to decrease your overall outlay. That's one thing we don't talk a lot about. We certainly had it in our analysis, but there is another payment, no matter what, that we will have to make.
Yeah. No, my question was, there's a difference if it's, we're talking about $600,000 versus $100,000, versus $600,000 versus $450,000. Because there's another element to it, which is in the last month, the mood, for lack of a better word, of that board has changed 180 degrees. So we were talking about a board that was looking at this organization as being an independent organization that switched almost overnight from a board that is talking about, we are 18 districts. And what I think we need to be concerned at this point is regardless of what happens with this, we have to live with these 18 districts forever because we have other agreements with these 18 districts. So it's a different relationship that we have now, not because we changed, but because reality sank in on the other 17 districts. So I'm not suggesting not to go the path forward, but I do suggest that we review how we treat our relationship with our partners because some of these districts are our feeder districts. So right now, we have, I don't know how many of those 18 that already approved their exit of the district. And again, I think nobody will complain if we're talking about $500,000, $600,000 versus $100,000. But if down the road, we made the decision that at the end of the day, didn't save us any money, we look as we tried to do grant standing where the main goal that we wanted was accomplished, which is for them to review how they do their business and to determine if they're going to change or they're going to dissolve, so...
Those are really good points, and I think we've worked really hard through all of this to be as careful listeners and empathetic to the impacts of the other districts. Fortunately, in our situation, all the members of the township voted in favor of our withdrawal. So did all the members of the New Trier Township. And the four votes against us were the same, who voted against District 34's withdrawal. An interesting note is, one of the districts who voted against our withdrawal has asked for withdrawal. So, and it's our understanding that all 18 districts are at least proceeding with withdrawal, but like one of our options, monitoring to see maybe something will kind of rise from the ashes here that will be beneficial. So the other thing that's happening, I think, is important. We're having early conversations with our feeder districts to see what sort of partnerships we can make to pool resources for some particularly low incident programs, OTPT, speech, vision, and assistive technology. And what can we do collectively, since we're all so close together in this township, to save money, to make sure we have, and more importantly, I should say, more importantly, to make sure we have services for these kids?
Thank you.
Any other questions? I actually had a question. Are any of the other districts that have now sought to withdraw, are any of them following the same statutory path that we're following?
It's my understanding that they're all following either the Articles of Agreement or the bill brought to the floor and passed by Tracy Katz-Mall with the 2027 withdrawal date. As a reminder, we started before that bill was even initiated. So we're kind of in that middle ground there.
Okay, and District 34's, if they're successful on the path that they're on, will... Their withdrawal date will be next year, 2026?
Yeah, ours will be the same.
Right.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to offer clarification. It's been a while since we looked at these numbers. District 225's proportional share of OPED liability is 2.5 million, not 1.5, 2.5 million. However, should the organization dissolve, there are approximately $37 million in assets. So that would just... We are entitled still to a proportion of the assets.
So now that we're a few years in, we've hired a large number of staff. We have our programs framed out better. I'd like to ask that we receive a summary of the programs and expenses because one of the reasons that we decided to go along this path was we felt that the financial model was very unfair, where we paid a very high amount but sent very few students for services, and it was very disproportionate. So we've made this change. And I'm curious where we are with our expenses, with all the staff, and, you know, the things that go along to support the students and the programs. And also, let's make sure we look at numbers of students involved because if that's fluctuating around, then obviously you have an impact on staffing.
So we will...
Thank you.
Fortunately, we're actually in a really good spot. One of the benefits of a piece of legislation that was passed a little more than a year ago is that we are now able to seek reimbursement for public therapeutic placements that exceed our, what we call our two times per cap or two times tuition. So we have very extensive accounting for Glenn Burkeoff campus as well as our transition services program and our TLS program. So we'll bring all of that to the board likely in the early fall. That's okay.
Are those federal or state dollars or a combination?
State.
But us recommending the appeal doesn't really change anything because we can still get all this information and decide to stay. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the work that's... The report, the justification, or the demonstration that we're capable of providing these services to our kids, that's largely done at this point?
It's largely done. In fact, I have a meeting tomorrow with a couple of people on the team to go through the first cut. It's going to need some revision. It's just an incredibly enormous document, but we're really close.
Okay. And where things sit right now with True North is there's just a lot of uncertainty, timeline-wise, goals, sort of the whole, everything.
Yeah, it's, there's a lot of work that's going to need to be done. There's several different ideas for how to proceed. A couple of committees have been recommended recently, you know, two amendments. The Articles of Agreement were passed. There's others on the table that are coming. So there's a lot of flux. The superintendent of True North has taken a position out of state. Another high-level administrator has resigned. So there is a lot of... I don't know how to say this. There's just a lot of change happening. And we don't, you know, we're empathetic to what that feels like. We want to help. We don't want to cause more disruption. But for the sake of our district and our taxpayers, we feel it incumbent upon us to proceed.
I guess on a de facto basis, we're already handling our students, correct?
Right, that's the last move in terms of handling all our students was the opening, will be the opening of the Transition Center. We have a small number of families that asked us to leave their children in the True North program, which we agreed to through the middle of next year because those students are particularly sensitive to radical changes. And so we honor that. And I suspect, I really hope, that when some of those families see the center, they may change their mind.
Well, it sounds like there's radical change coming to True North regardless. So, yeah, as long as we're taking care of our students, I'm confident it sounds like whether we should proceed on the next-year basis because at worst, if it doesn't work, we can go with the bill if that does get signed. It's not like it's an either-or thing.
Right.
So, okay.
And another point just to toot Dr. Gravell's horn is, you know, we've offered any assistance we can provide. And when it comes to taking another look at finances, either moving forward or recommendations that have been made so far, Dr. Gravell's on record of offering his assistance, which he's particularly skilled at. So whatever we can do to make the best of that situation or to make it better for us and for the others who want to withdraw, we want to be a part of making a good thing out of this situation.
Any other discussion? Can I have a motion?
There's a scripted motion. So I move the board, that the Board of Education authorize the administration to appeal the determination of the district petition to withdraw from True North Educational Cooperative 804 to the North Cook Intermediate Service Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. My computer is sleeping. That takes us then to review and summary of the board meeting. And we had a pretty light agenda on this one. We had a wonderful presentation about summer school, which was exciting to hear about. And it sounds like great things are happening. And we'll just a few more days to get through. We also heard about Dr. George's trip to Michigan with Habitat for Humanity, which sounded like a wonderful experience for her and for the kids. We had a discussion of the budget with a presentation from our finance committee regarding the tentative budget for the 25, 26 school year. And we approved making that available for review. And we just approved pursuing the petition... The, excuse me, the appeal of our petition to withdraw from the True North Cooperative. And I believe we do have closed session tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we talk about that, I would like to say that we have on our agenda is I have eight possible topics for future board meetings. If any board members have any subjects that they would like to have addressed at a future board meeting, speak now or send me an email. Okay, great. In that case, we do have closed session tonight. And let's see. One thing I do want to point out is that we will not be having any action coming out of closed session. So, you know, for our large audience, that lets them go home. Where is my script? Here it is. Okay. "At this time, I will entertain a motion to consider collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, security procedures, school building safety and security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual, a threatened, or a reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public, or public property. And litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting." This is in accordance with Sections 2, C2, 8, and 11 of the Open Meeting Act.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Five minutes? Wrap up pretty quickly. Okay, how about we're back?